The Town of Plainville, established in 1721 at the geographical center of Connecticut.
Okay, welcome everybody. Welcome to our regular town council meeting. Tonight is Monday, April 18th, 2022 at 7:00 PM. If you'll please stand for the pledge, Councilman Rocco will lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, we do not have any presentations tonight, but we do have two items for public hearing, and I will begin by asking our town clerk to please read the notice of the public hearing.
Notice is hereby given that the Plainville Town Council will hold public hearings at 7:00 PM on Monday, April 18th, 2022, in the council chambers of the municipal center of Plainville to hear public comments regarding: One, proposals for the 2022 Neighborhood Assistance Act. Two, use of the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds associated with the American Rescue Plan Act to replenish funds lost due to the COVID pandemic for the following departments: Library, estimated cost $100,000; and Recreation Department, estimated cost $40,000, dated at Plainville, Connecticut, this 14th day of April, 2022.
Thank you very much. Robert, before I open up the public hearing, can you just give a few thoughts on that which we're going to be asking folks to speak if they wish to do so?
Yes, the first one is the Neighborhood Assistance Act, which is a state program where qualified nonprofits that perform some type of service in municipalities, and in this case, Plainville, can get some tax benefits for those corporations that donate to them. The way that these nonprofits get qualified is it needs to be recognized by the town council that they are legitimate nonprofit entities in our community, and we have to fill out a form to the state to indicate that, and if that is approved this evening, then they will get certain tax benefits. There's several applications that have been made. We do this on an annual basis. One is from the Congregational Church for some of the work that they're going to have done, some of the fundraising events they're doing at their church. The other one is the Prudence Crandall people who, while I believe they're based in New Britain, they also provide some nonprofit services to the town of Plainville as well. So that's the Neighborhood Assistance Act. We've received three applications, two I believe from the Congressional, well, one from the Congressional Church, I think, two from Prudence Crandall for some programs that they want to run in Plainville. The second item has to do with the use of the ARPA funds, what we call the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds. Both the library and the recreation department have their separate enterprise funds, separate funds that they have, a portion of which is used on an annual basis to support their budgets. The library, for example, the town of Plainville pays the great majority of the library budget, but each year, probably for the last, probably, well, since I've been here, but for the last four or five years, they've been using their unassigned fund balance an average of about $30,000 to $40,000 a year to help support their budget. That has drawn down to a level where it's not sustainable for, you know, going forward into next year's budget and the budget afterwards. Town council made a decision during the budget process that they would backfill $100,000 into their unassigned fund balance so that it could be used to help support library operations for the next several years and not require an increase to the town's general fund contribution to the library services that they provide. So it doesn't cut back on any library services. It helps the town, the town council, the town taxpayers, to be able not to have to increase general fund contributions to the library and allow the Plainville library trustees to be able to continue to support their budget as well for the next several years. With regards to the recreation fund, the town also funds a certain portion of the recreation fund that provides recreation programs for our citizens. It's clear that the recreation funds that are raised through programs by residents who pay them directly does not cover the entire cost of the programs themselves. So as a result, the town does contribute a certain portion towards the recreation fund from the general fund. The largest example of that is the Norton Park Pool, which is a relatively expensive operation. The fees that are charged for the use of the Norton Park Pool, which are relatively, I guess, relatively less compared to a private pool association, allows Plainville residents to be able to utilize a pool, you know, rather than pay significantly higher fees that are available, you know, in other options, especially in other towns. The amount of money that's being proposed to go into the recreation fund is to help them to be able to allow for the town's contribution to the recreation revenue fund to stay at the current level because their unassigned fund balance has been drawn down over the last couple of years because they haven't been able to raise the revenues that they have, you know, as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic. So the town council decided to supplement their unassigned fund balance to $240,000. I know that's relatively complicated for somebody who's hearing it for the first time, but hopefully it's simple enough to understand, at least for this evening's purpose.
Great, thank you for that. Okay, I will open up the public hearing. We will have both of them spoken about separately. The first item is the 2022 Neighborhood Assistance Act Proposals. Does anybody wish to speak to that public hearing? If you do, please come to the podium over here. State your name and address, please. Yes, please. Thank you. Okay, can you turn your mic on? Just push the button, that's right there.
Can you hear me?
Oh, perfect.
I apologize. My name is Manny Martinez. I am the Director of Operations, I'm sorry, Director of Development and Communications for the Crystal Center. We oversee the St. Philip's House here in Plainville. I'm not sure. I'm hoping that you guys received our application as it was hand-delivered. Okay, I want to make sure. Good evening, Councilor Prugliese, Councilor Underwood, Councilor Marante, Rocco. I'm hopefully I'm saying all these right. Councilor Tompkins, Councilor Wazorko. Thank you for your time. Crystal Center's main campus located in Hartford, Connecticut is the organization responsible for the total administration of the program and management of all financial elements related to St. Philip's House and its energy conservation program. Located on 88 Broad Street, St. Philip's House is described as a home, a place to feel safe, and a doorway to a better life, providing nine adults living with HIV/AIDS with onsite case management associated with housing activities such as access to medical and psycho-social services, legal needs, food and nutrition, and HIV support. As we look to continue our efforts of providing a safe and positive environment, there are significant areas of rehabilitation that will provide energy conservation and improve the safety and security and quality of life for those living at St. Philip's House. St. Philip's House has not had any upgrades and has the original components from when it was built that are not energy efficient. Installing an energy efficient heating and cooling system, adding an exhaust fan in the community kitchen, and replacing and adding much-needed energy lighting throughout the building, both buildings, will improve the overall health and well-being of our participants and allow Crystal Centers to save on future energy bills. If you guys have not been at the location on 88 Broad Street, we would love to take you for a tour. Thank you so much for your time, and I hope everybody has a great night. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much.
I apologize for not listing Crystal's group as putting in one of the applications, and I have toured the building and senior programs as well.
I appreciate that, Tom, I just, Lee, I know this is our first one here. We've had success in other areas where we also have, we oversee facilities and own facilities, so thank you so much for that. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you again. Does anybody else wish to speak to item number one, the Neighborhood Assistance Act proposal? Anybody else?
I'll push the button, the red button, yeah, thank you.
My name is Roy Plonker. I speak for the Citizens United States of America. I speak for the citizens of Plainville. I want to say, thank you for those, thank you, being nice to me. I've been, I've been good. One thing, but I like that, I like that. But one thing I want to say, Plainville's nice. I've been here seven years. I live in New Bern all my years, but one thing I want to say, I got a great manager right here. He's better than the one we got in New Bern right now. I tell you one thing, she's nice. But I know her very much, but she's very good, she's very good mayor. But one thing I say to you, thank you for being there with me. And for the citizens, this is the first time I have met myself with a citizen of United States. Now, I want to know what-
Okay, sir, can I just interrupt you for one moment? We're actually having a public hearing on a certain topic.
No, there's a certain topic in my apartment. There's a certain apartment. People live over there nice, but I got a problem with the garbage over there. They bring it over there. I live over there, I've been seven years. Now, I've been here seven years. I put a lock on it, and they broke the lock. And that bothers me. That bothers me. Now, you put a really heavy lock on it, make sure I have a lock for myself, no one has it. So I would say, nobody gets in the apartment because, you know, a lot of people come in their apartments, they put things in there. I don't like this. They put things in there, tires in there, tires! I seen last year, I was, so many tires in there, so many tires from apartments. Then I didn't live there, and they put apartments over, and they say, what the hell? I mean, tires not supposed to be in the garbage, right? Am I right?
That's right.
And there was tires in there, in there. I mean, if I had luck, had luck with you and me and the people that I trust, I would say to them, I would give them the luck, but put a lock on it, nobody can get, I had luck on it, there was a lock on it over there, and they broke it. It's broken. Now, so much garbage right now. I mean, they collect the garbage every day, not every day, once every two weeks. Now, if you collect the garbage every one week, that'd be a different story.
All right, let's get together after the meeting, and we'll talk about it. We'll talk about it with the police chief, how's that?
Yeah, that would be good.
So stick around. Stick around.
I stick around. I'll be around.
Thank you.
All of you, we got to work on this. You have to work on this, right?
Okay.
And I got to work with him, so, she's the mayor. He's the mayor!
Yes.
Yes, he is the mayor!
He'll help you.
Yeah, he'll help me. Thank you very much.
Yes.
Citizens, thank you very much. I feel like I was. Thank you very much.
Does anybody else wish to speak to the public hearing regarding the Neighborhood Assistant Act proposal that we spoke of? Nobody else? Anybody else? Okay, I'll close that portion of the public hearing. Moving on to item number two, use of coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds associated with the American Rescue Plan. As town manager said, we have two items that we're looking to take care of, one of which is the library for $100,000, the recreation department for $40,000. Does anybody wish to speak to that public hearing? Mr. Frangos?
Hey, you can speak to your mic. Just a quick understanding.
Why don't you have your name and address? We know who you are, but for the record, you have an address.
Oh, I'm sorry, Lou Frangos, 10 Fairbanks Street.
Perfect.
The replenishment, the funds, and you're talking about the library for $100,000. What would that be used for? And there's a reason, the reason I'm asking, maybe, let me lead into it, please. My fault, I'm sorry. I'm looking at the budget, and there, let's see, where did I find this? Recreation, okay, let's start with the library, got it. Through this, they have, they only use 72% of their funds, according to this latest.
Right, through three-quarters of the year.
It's three-quarters of the year. We're almost into a new budget. So what would the $100,000 be for? Why would they need it if they have a 25% existence right now?
Right, Robert.
First off, we anticipate they're going to spend 100% by the time they get to 100% of the year. So, you know, we've only gone through 75% of the year. They spent 72% of their dollars. So, you know, if it goes at that same trend, they're going to spend probably about $100,000, you know, 100% of that by the time they get out to the end of June because the fiscal year ends in three months. Okay, so you understand that part of it?
Yes, I understand it.
The entire budget that they have, which is what, $788,000 is their budget?
Total, $744,000.
$744,000. They contribute from their unassigned fund balance to support that budget about $44,000. So of the $744,000, they contribute about $44,000 this year to that budget. Next year, their budget increases slightly. They will continue to support it by contributing $44,000, except they don't have $44,000 to contribute. So if they don't have the $44,000, it has to be made up somewhere else, or the budget needs to be reduced. So the council decided to keep the budget at the same, you know, what they asked for, which was a modest increase, but to allow the library trustees to continue to support their own budget by giving them some additional ARPA dollars, so it doesn't have to be locally paid for.
Okay. Now, excuse my ignorance on this.
Sure.
But you're saying they're using their budget, but isn't that money coming from the first budget that we vote on?
We're talking about-
What I'm hearing is, they seem, and I stand to be correct, this is education for me.
Sure.
All right. Well, it sounds like the way it's being presented now, I'm hearing that they have two separate budgets. And I'm saying, wait, how can they have two separate budgets if it's coming from one source?
Well, they have two, no, we have one budget, which is $744,000 for next year, of which some revenues come from the town, and some revenues come from the library to support their budget. So the town funds the budget, not 100%, they contribute some dollars towards their own budget.
Okay, now I'm seeing you.
Okay.
And it's similar to the recreation department.
No, you just answered that one, too.
Yeah, same with the library.
So it's as independent of revenue coming in the door other than the budget?
Correct.
And that inventory, that individual coming in is what they're being impacted by?
Right.
And the town, we don't, it's not part of their budget, our budget?
They have some trustee funds, which also produce revenue that helps to support their overall budget as well.
Okay, so they build their own little budget, and the town also supports them?
Yes.
That's why, I never knew that.
The majority of it, but not 100% of it.
No, I understand, but I thought it was all-inclusive and one, and that's why I was getting perplexed. Now, the way it's being described, it's not.
No.
Okay, and it's going to be the same with our next item, which is the recreation department? They have a fund where they can, they have revenues that come in for their programming, and, you know, pool passes and such. We're going to do the same thing as Mr. Wazorko.
Wazorko said.
So, yeah.
Okay, and I didn't know it. And I thank you for your patience.
No problem. Does anybody else wish to speak that hasn't done so on either one of these items regarding American Rescue Plan funding? Anybody else? Okay, thank you for your comments. I'll close the public hearing and moving along. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Motion to approve the minutes of the April 4th, 2022, regular meeting.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Are there any additions or corrections to that? Hearing, none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you for that. Item number four, announcements and reports. Do we have any announcements or reports tonight?
Madam Chair.
Go right ahead.
Yes, I attended the April meeting of the Library Board of Trustees last Tuesday. Just two highlights, they're working on going through all the library policies. Big project, but they want to take a look at them all, and they haven't been revised for some time. So they'll be working on that. And also, just to mention that the date and time have been set for the dedication of the Youth Services Room in memory of Betty Bocus, and that's going to be Friday, May 20th, at 5:30, and the library will be handling publicity and invitations on that. So more to come on that.
Okay, great.
Those two highlights.
Okay, all set? Anybody else have anything to report?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
On May 21st, the Plainville Fire Department Company will be hosting a community open house. It'll be held at the fire department from 11 to 4:00 PM, and if it rains, it'll be held May 22nd.
Okay, great. Does anybody else have anything?
Madam Chair, I spoke to Councilman Katanzaro earlier today. He attended the Conservation Commission meeting last week, a portion of it. He indicated that they are still concerned about having a fishing ban at Pateroski Pond for the summer. We had indicated, town staff had indicated to them that that would come as a result of a recommendation of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. We've directed them to go, to head in that direction, to see if that's recommended from them as well. To date, that, you know, they haven't done that yet, so just if he wanted me to report that that was an issue that was of concern to them.
Okay, thank you for that. Anybody else have anything? I have two items that I will give you an update. I attended the Committee on Aging this week, last week, rather, sorry. According to the director's report, the senior center is mostly back to normal. Most of their programming has resumed. They are looking for some more volunteers. There's still some folks that are not comfortable coming out in group settings. So if anybody's interested in becoming a volunteer, please give Sean or Rhonda a call down there. They'll definitely be happy to welcome you as a new volunteer to help them out. They also need some drivers. HRA is a separate company that hires the drivers for folks that need to go on the dial-a-ride, and it's like a screening company. They have to have a certain certification and things of that nature. It takes about two weeks to get through, to get their specific endorsement. So if anybody is interested in becoming a driver for the dial-a-ride, there's a need for that. So they would ask that you, again, call the senior center. Karen Pagliaro has returned to the senior center. She's a nurse who worked for several years and had left some time ago, but she's back now that she retired, and she's going to be doing a memory café along with Circa Group and Wellness. And so that everybody's happy to have Karen back on board. She's going to be helping them with a number of different programs. On April 19th, the senior center is going to sponsor a get-together to meet our new police chief. I'm not sure what time that was. Do you have the time, chief?
I believe it's at 11:00 AM, but, um-
Okay, it wasn't on my notes, I apologize, but the seniors will be happy to have you come and meet them.
The reader. It's, yes, 11:00 AM.
11:00 AM? Okay, perfect, thank you. All right, let's see, the craft fair is scheduled for November 5th. A lot of their events that they had to postpone or cancel because of COVID are now back on tap. They're going to have a healthy cooking demonstration May 11th, back pain and lunch, May 12th, cholesterol screening, June 6th, United Way Health Fair will be June 7th, skin cancer screening, June 17th, tag sale and used jewelry sale, August 25th to the 26th. That's a very popular time. And their annual craft fair, November 5th, it's $35 if you wish to be a vendor at the fair. So with all of these exciting events coming up, and they're trying to return back to their normal greatness, they were always great, but, you know, as COVID changed a lot of things, they're getting back to their normal programming. So please be in touch with Sean and Rhonda if you decide you wanted to participate or do any of those items. I also have a report from the Board of Education this evening. They have a few things that are going to be coming up shortly, so I'm just going to highlight a couple of them. This Thursday, April 21st, will be the Superintendent's District Showcase. It begins at 6:30 in the Plainville High School Auditorium. They have some performances to start the showcase off, and then the superintendent will share a brief welcome and do an overview of the event. They are looking forward to seeing everybody. Light refreshments will be served. Ultimately, the goal is to highlight several of the wonderful opportunities and successes of the students and the PCS community. The next item is strategic planning next steps. Plainville schools are going to continue on with their strategic planning process. They've conducted surveys, had a virtual kickoff recently, and they are going to be having a large in-person meeting with over 50 people representing a cross-section of our community on May 3rd. Invitations were mailed to invited guests, including state representative, town council members, board members, administrators, faculty and staff members, and community partners. So if you got an invitation and you're able to participate, I'm sure they'd like to have as many folks as possible there. And, let's see, they are also supporting a Ukraine refugee support fundraiser on Friday, April 22nd. The superintendent is inviting everybody, students and staff, to wear the blue and yellow Ukraine flag colors that everybody has become familiar with, and in doing so, bringing in a financial donation of a dollar or more, if you wish. And the funding will go to an organization called World Central Kitchen, which the superintendent learned about from a local family who has relatives in Poland just two hours from the border of Ukraine. So this is a way of the Plainville Community Schools reaching out to help that area of the world, as we all know, is such a devastating experience right now. So I think that's about it. They sent along their report, and I'm happy to share with everybody. So if there are no other announcements and reports right now, we'll move along to appointments and resignations. I know we have an appointment.
Madam Chair.
Go right ahead.
A motion to appoint Claire Adams as the resident commissioner to the Housing Authority Commission.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Are there any other appointments or reappointments tonight? None? Okay. All right, I already gave my- Okay, all right, I already gave my Board of Ed report under my section. Report of the town attorney, Attorney Mastriani, hello?
Good evening.
Do you have anything for us tonight?
I do not.
Okay, thank you for joining us. All right, on to the report of the town manager. Mr. Lee?
Yes, I have several items, the first of which is the personnel policies. On January 18th, town staff submitted an update of the Personnel Policy Manual to the town council. This policy has not been updated and reviewed by the town council in many years. The purpose of the manual is to provide employees and applicants with important information concerning employment with the town of Plainville, to provide a uniform policy for handling all non-union personnel matters, and to handle and clarify situations applicable to all employees, including union personnel unless it's stated otherwise in their collective bargaining agreement. As requested, a redline copy of the policy was provided to the town council, and that was electronically. I will poll council members, maybe at the end of this report, how many want hard copies? I could make them for you this evening before we leave, but I just didn't want to make one for everyone if they didn't need it. I know of at least one council person who's looking for a hard copy, so. The Human Resource Director, Stacy Budin, has proposed updating the personnel policy to reflect changes that have occurred in both federal and state law. It has also been updated to reflect some of the changes that have also occurred to benefits that are currently provided to town employees. The draft has been reviewed by Attorney Kenneth Weinstein as well. I will point out that under Chapters 8, Section 2 of the Town Charter, it states that the manager shall also cause to have prepared a set of personnel rules, which together with any amendments thereto, shall become effective upon being approved by the town council and filed by the town manager with the town clerk. Copies of such rules and any amendments thereto shall be distributed to all members of the classified service. So that's the portion of the- So that's the portion of the charter that we're trying to comply with, with bringing this to the Town Council. Town staff is prepared to answer questions with respect to the proposed amendments to the Personnel Policy Manual at a future meeting if desired.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item I have is the Farmington Canal Heritage Trail Discussion Phase 1. The State Department of Transportation is finalizing Phase 1 of the Farmington Canal Heritage Trail in Plainville. Phase 1 will extend from Norton Park South to Town Line Road. The present schedule indicates that the design will be completed this December with an anticipated destruction beginning in the spring of 2023, next year. Between now and December, the state will be seeking environmental permits for the project and acquiring several private property rights away. The plan is the same as what was presented at a public information session last year. Scott Bushy, the Project Manager for DOT, has offered to attend a Town Council meeting if desired as well. Next item I have is the White Oak Redevelopment Project Update. The agreement with Ty and Bond to provide environmental site assessment, remediation, planning and observation, and hazardous building materials assessment, abatement planning, and monitoring of the former White Oak Site has been signed. The maximum fee for these services is $143,883,090, all of which will be paid for by a state grant previously secured by the town. Ty and Bond will begin their work shortly. Their first order of business will be to assist the town in having the site enrolled in what's known as the Connecticut Deep Voluntary Cleanup Program. It is anticipated that the work will last approximately 240 days. However, certain portions of the property may become available to the developer during this time to allow them to begin work on the rehabilitation of the existing building. Town staff will also be finalizing the land disposition and development agreement with Manafort Newport Realty TY LLC. It is now estimated this agreement will be brought forward to the Town Council for approval next month. Next item I have is the 2022 Road Paving Update. The 2022 Road Bond Program has begun with work being done on the catch basins on the streets to be paved. The plan is to mill and pave 19 streets totaling approximately three miles in length. These streets will have not been paved in over 30 years. The work is expected to be completed by Memorial Day. And we did provide a copy of the streets to be paved to the Town Council. We've also posted that on the town website for citizens who wish to see that. I think most people, because of the milling that has gone, or some of the catch basin work that has been done, and some of the signs have gone up, can tell which streets are being paved. But if anybody has any questions about it, they can go online as well or contact my office, and I will email them a copy. Next item is the Sidewalk Bid Results. Last Thursday, April 14th, five bids were received for the sidewalk replacement. The low bid was submitted by DNP Marais Construction of Ludlow, Massachusetts, in the amount of $332,350. The engineers estimate for this work was $500,000. Town staff is reviewing the bids and will also check references of previous work. The project includes the replacement of 7,000 linear feet of sidewalks on portions of Maxine Road, Bernice Court, Florence Lane, Thomason Avenue, and Laurel Court. The project will also replace the sidewalk in front of West Main Pizza on East Main Street. I know that sounds like an oxymoron, but it's actually on West Main Street Pizza on East Main Street.
That's been a longstanding issue there. There's a lot of flooding that occurs. And I think that's great that they'll be able to do that as well.
DNP Marais is a pre-qualified construction contractor through the state of Connecticut Department of Administrative Services for projects up to $1 million. So they are on the, you know, the bid list, or at least the approved bid list for the state. A recommendation to award the sidewalk bill will be made at the May 2 Town Council Meeting. The project will also be done this summer. Next item I have is the Hemingway Street Drainage Issue. At the November 15, 2021 Town Council Meeting, town staff reported that several residents on Hemingway Street had contacted the town regarding a drainage problem that was impacting their properties. This drainage issue is related to surface and groundwater flowing southerly towards the remnants of the Farmington Canal located in Norton Park at the rear of their property. During most of the year, rear portions of their properties are unusable due to flowing and standing water. Some of the water is coming from adjacent town-owned property as well. It was discussed that property owners had approached the town for a solution to this matter. Information gathered indicates that when these properties were developed in the early 1960s, a pipe and swell were installed to address this issue. There are no records of the original installation, nor whether any legal documents filed identifying responsibilities for the drainage pipe. Over time, it appears sections of the pipe have failed and portions of the swell were regraded. The exact extent of the original installation is unknown. However, historical aerial photographs seem to indicate the installation extended northerly from Norton Park to at least Willis Avenue. The most practical solution to this matter would be to reestablish the original installation with modifications. The first and form and most important modification would be to draft and file the appropriate legal documents outlining responsibilities. Other modifications would involve design elements that would improve the efficiency and durability of the system. It is the engineering department's recommendation the new pipe be constructed of PVC and that the reestablished swell include yard drains. Any installation is contingent upon complete agreement of the property owners involved, since it's on private property. An easement will need to be secured from every property owner involved in the project. The project can only proceed northerly from Norton Park to the point where the first property owner is not agreeable to the easement. Makes sense. A conceptual design review indicates approximately 2,000 linear feet of PVC pipe would need to be installed, along with approximately five yard drains. The cost for such installation is estimated in the range of $75,000 to $100,000. Costs could be less if town staff were to perform the installation. Should town staff install the system, out-of-pocket costs could just be for the materials needed. If the Town Council was interested in providing a solution to this longstanding drainage issue, it would be my recommendation that the property owners directly affected pay a portion of the construction. The cost could then be offset using, the remaining costs could be offset using American Rescue Plan monies as well. In November, the Town Council appeared willing to move forward in some way to address the problem. If desired, work to replace the pipe could be done later this summer, usually be done during the dry season, maybe August. Town staff is seeking Town Council thoughts on whether the town staff should move forward with a plan to address this issue. So I'm looking for some feedback this evening, if possible, or at least at the next meeting with respect to this. Because if you want us to move forward, we would begin to contact the property owners about seeing if they would be amendable to easements.
So Robert, are you looking for input from all of the owners that would be affected? Because they'd have to be, as you say, some agreement to get the easements done. So it would have to be all or none, or we couldn't do it kind of here and there. That wouldn't make sense, would it?
Yeah. It'd be hard to jump over one property.
Of course.
Not, yeah, continuous.
Agreed. You know, my opinion, just for discussion purposes, is that these folks that, where this subdivision was put together so many years ago, and there's no way to track back who the contractor was, and what happened, and how it happened, I think if it's not, you know, it's money, but I think that if we're going to go ahead and with the agreement of the property owners, that we should use some of our, we should use ARPA money to cover this. This is not something that the property owners created themselves. It's a natural situation, whether either the pipes are broken or something happened back there from when it was originally constructed. So I would be okay using ARPA money if that would help get this completed. Anybody else have any thoughts on that? Or do you need some time to think about it?
I agree with Kathy. I think ARPA money should be used for it. And I'm up for the homeowners forking over some of the expenses.
Anybody else have any, or do you want to think about it? I think Robert's looking for some consensus of going forward to doing some of this initial work that has to happen in terms of contacting the homeowners and trying to get a schedule going and things of that nature. Anybody else?
Robert, if you feel the town staff would save money, what do you figure the savings would be? We're talking up as high as $100,000, possibly $75,000. If our staff did, it'd be a lot less. Take about $20,000, $25,000 off of that.
So I totally agree. The ARPA money is there. Let's use it for that benefit. I mean, this problem hasn't gone away, and it's been with us for how long?
Well, those houses were built, I believe, in the mid-'70s, this particular section. I think the drainage was put in for the houses that were further, you know, further to the north. And I think there was a pipe that went through there. And then when, you know, then there were a couple of houses that were built afterwards closer to Norton Park, and their backyards had the pipe. That appears to be the timing that I've seen, although it's unclear in the records. I do know when those houses were built. So, yeah, I think it makes a lot of sense to, you know, to consider this.
Anybody else?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I'm fine moving forward. I mean, we are going to have to have some buy-in with the residents, obviously.
Right.
I'm certainly committed to trying to fix the problem if we can work with the residents and get their, any necessary approvals we need as far as easements are concerned. And, you know, yeah, I'm willing to keep moving forward on this.
It certainly would be an easier buy-in if they didn't have to contribute to it.
Well, right. But that is something that we need to discuss, and we need to gauge their, you know, what they're willing to do. You know, how bad of a problem is it for them?
It's not unusual for the town to have drainage easements on private property. I mean, it's not.
Common.
It's not common, but it's not, you know, we have several around the community as well. I would recommend that if we were to, if the town were to have this installed, that the town be responsible for keeping an eye on it going forward as well.
And I also think, Robert, because of the, you know, some of the quotes we're getting in for some of the other projects, such as the sidewalk, it's coming in less than we had sort of earmarked some of those funds for. I know there's more sidewalks to be done, for sure. But I think that we would have, we have some excess monies to help cover that.
Okay. Madam Chair?
Yes.
I believe that it's about, what, nine or 10 homes?
It was estimated somewhere around nine or 10 homes.
That are affected. So it's, you know, it's a sizable chunk down there.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, and you'll be able to talk during public, there's another opportunity for you to speak during public comments. So, yes. Yeah. So if you can, if you can hold up, wait, if you can hold up till we get to public comments, you'll be able to ask your questions. So just wait a little, be a little bit.
We have a couple more things to do.
Okay. Just wait a moment.
Does everybody down here in agreement with that approach?
Yes, I agree with all the comments, Matt.
Okay. All right. So I guess the consensus is to go ahead and do what we need to do as far as, you know, laying the groundwork.
Okay. Next item I have is the Honor Heights Sewer Public Hearing. It's recommending that the Town Council, acting in its capacity as the Water Push Control Authority, conduct a public hearing regarding the extension of sewers into the Honor Heights subdivision on Tuesday, May 17, 2022, beginning at 7:00 p.m. in the Town Council Chambers. That would be a public hearing of the Water Push Control Authority, which is the Town Council. This would be the night after your May 16 Town Council meeting. If scheduled, the public notice and long wind and explanation. The proposed project will be mailed to all property owners in Honor Heights approximately two weeks before the public hearing. There will also be a presentation during the public hearing, and then people would have the opportunity to comment or ask questions about the project. And then, you know, then the council would decide whether to move forward with the project. There is an item in the new business regarding this recommendation.
Great. Thank you.
And I can share with the Town Council what we're going to send to the property owners before it gets sent out. So you can review it and determine whether you think it's complete enough, or if there's anything that you think has gaps in information, you can let me know, and we'll supplement that as well. I'm working on it as we speak.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item is additional appropriation to the Capital Improvement Plan. The fiscal year '22 Capital Improvement Plan includes funding from the unassigned fund balance in the amount of $869,150. Earlier this year, the Town Council approved an additional appropriation of $600,000 to the capital improvement program. Town staff is remaining, Town staff is recommending that the Town Council schedule a public hearing for the remaining amount, which is $269,150. For May 2, 2022, at 7:00 p.m. in the Town Council Chambers, there is an item in the new business regarding this recommendation. So the town, you know, the budget, the capital improvement budget included using $869,150 from the unassigned fund balance in order to get that into the capital improvement budget. It requires additional appropriations from the unassigned fund balance. Council already did a good chunk of it earlier this year. This is just the remaining amount.
Okay.
It's a procedural matter, but it requires a public hearing. Next item I have is the American Rescue Plan Act Proposed Project. As you are aware, we bring in, you know, these projects forward in a case-by-case basis, maybe a couple at the same time. But the list of potential projects to consider for ARPA funding included the replacement of the chiller at Tofflon Elementary School in the amount of $300,000. The plan is to have this chiller replaced before the start of school in September. I've received information that when they started up this year, they still have some significant problems, and so they don't believe it's going to last, you know, any further going forward. There is an item in the new business that would schedule a public hearing on this expenditure utilizing coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds for the May 2, 2022, before the next Town Council meeting to have a public hearing. And there is an item in our new business regarding that. Next item I have is the Fair Housing. Entitled Fair Housing, the town is required to regularly acknowledge our commitment to fair housing. There are three items in the new business that would, one, adopt a resolution entitled Fair Housing Resolution; two, reappoint the Town Manager as the Fair Housing Officer, and authorize him to sign and implement the Fair Housing Statement; and three, authorize the Town Manager to sign and implement the Title VI Equal Opportunity Statement. These are standard, once-a-year type of items, but they're required by state and federal authorities, and so we're going to try to comply with that. Next item is our financial dashboard. This was provided to the Town Council for your meeting tonight. It was also posted on the town website, and this is for the first nine months of the fiscal year. This is through March 31st. I'll go through it quickly unless there's questions that you may want to ask. On the expenditures, we've spent almost 72% of the budget, and last two-year average was about 70 and 1/2%. So we're pretty much in line with the two-year averages. As far as the general government budget, we've spent 75.86% of the budget, and two-year average is 76.89%. So we're pretty much on budget as far as that's concerned. As far as the education budget is concerned, they've spent 69% of their budget. Their two-year average is about 66.7%. So they're pretty much in line as well. There's no surprises with regards to the budget, other than what we've, you know, we've talked about at previous meetings. As far as police overtime is concerned, we've spent 83% of the budget through March 31st for 3/4 of the year, $457,000. That is about $24,000 less than the two-year average. So doesn't mean, you know, we're going to overspend our budget, but, you know, perhaps under the two-year average. With regards to roadways overtime, we've spent $110,000, which is, while it's over budget, to date, it's about $2,500 less than what our two-year average has been. The roadways does supplement some of the work to help the road bond program and, you know, leaf program, leaf collection program. So, you know, council was familiar with those numbers. Buildings and grounds overtime, they've spent 81% of their budget. It's about $2,800 less than the two-year average. Roadway snow overtime, they did spend about 87% of their budget, $46,000, although we're expecting perhaps some flurries this evening somewhere in the state. I'm not sure that that's going to impact our roadway snow overtime. So it looks like that budget, that number, roadways overtime, is going to come in under budget. With regards to buildings and grounds overtime, snow overtime, they spent 118% of their budget, $30,000. This year, the buildings and grounds did really focus on trying to keep the schools, you know, getting out earlier so that there wouldn't be as many snow days. And that's one of the reasons why they've spent, you know, over their two-year average by about $11,000. With regards to municipal solid waste, through March 31st, our budget, we've had about 4,400 tons. had about 4,400 tons, and that's pretty much in line with the two-year average. If this rate continues of use, 494 tons per month, the budget will have a surplus of about $4,900. In previous dashboards, we were, we were running a little bit of a deficit, but based on our current trend, we may end up with a slight surplus. With regards to recycling, we continue to run somewhere near our two-year average in terms of total tonnages for recycling, but the, the recycling tip fee is significantly less than what we budgeted. We're now projecting a surplus in that particular line item, somewhere around $82,000 if we continue with the current trend that's, that we've experienced so far. So that's on the expenditure side. With regards to revenues, again, this is through March 31st, we've collected 89.59% of all of our revenues. Our two-year average is 89.68%, so we're right in line with our two-year average. So we, we feel comfortable with that. With regards to current taxes, we've collected 99.42% of our, of our current tax budget that was budgeted, which is a portion of all revenues. But we, we focus on current taxes. That's generally an indicator of whether the local taxpayers are, are paying their taxes, at least, at least, you know, you know, as compared to, you know, previous years. So we're at 99.42%. The two-year average is 99.47%, so we're right in line with two-year average. With regards to the unassigned fund balance, the audit was completed, and our unassigned fund balance as of the beginning of the fiscal year is slightly higher than what we had, you know, been using in previous, previous reports. I've updated that. Our unassigned fund balance at the beginning of the fiscal year is now $12,123,000. You can see the number right above that if you have the current dashboard. We were projecting, we had, you know, an unaudited amount last month of $11,800,000. So it's about $320,000 higher, the audited number compared to the, to, you know, what we had reported last month, which was unaudited. That bumps all of our percentages up. So at the beginning of the year, we were at 18.79%. We're now projecting, you know, based upon the unassigned fund balances that have been made to date, and also, which includes the amount, the full amount to support the capital improvement budget, that we could end the year with, without any additional appropriations of about 16.1%. Are there any questions with regards to the revenue side? So better, certainly a better report than, slightly better report, I mean, it's been fairly poor all the way through the fiscal year. With regards to our special funds, Recreation Fund, which we've talked about a little bit this evening, we received, and Recreation is tough because over the last two years, we haven't, you know, we've, we've canceled a lot of recreation programs. We've collected 47 and 1/2% of our, of our budgeted revenues. Two-year average was 44.36, so you can see where we are ramping up. A good portion of our revenues will come in at the end of the fiscal year as people sign up for, for the summer, summer program at Norton Park. As far as our expenditures are concerned, we spent 42%. Two-year average is about 45%, so we're even a little bit behind as far as our expenditures are concerned. Robertson Airport, pretty much in line with the budget, both on the revenue side and the expenditure side. Our current unassigned fund balance for the Robertson Airport is $432,000. With regards to the water push control facility, we spent 78% of the budget. Two-year average is about 73%. And as far as revenues are concerned, we've collected 96% of our revenues. Two-year average is about a little bit over 98%. So water push control facilities budget is pretty much online. Plainville Library budget expenditures, we spent 72.4% of the budget, the, you know, and that's pretty much, it's between .01% of the two-year average. As far as the revenues are concerned, running a little bit behind as far as the receipt on revenues. A portion of that is from the trustee funds. As far as major projects report, there's been no action on any expenditures in March, so pretty much the report is the same as, as last month as well. So that's the, that's the dashboard through March 30, March 31st. I'd like to turn it over to Cindy, sounds like Cindy Perini, for the happenings, and then both her and I will be available to answer any questions regarding our reports.
Thank you.
Good evening. I have Senior Center has programs for the month of April for this week. Meet and greet the new police chief and presentation on scams and crimes targeting our elder. Tuesday, April 19th at 11:00 AM. Nutrition trivia bingo, Tuesday, April 19th at 2:00 PM. Dolly Parton, The Life and Times, Thursday, April 21st at 10:00 AM. Memory Cafe at the Senior Center, Thursday, April 21st, 2:30 PM. And Luminary Decorating for Bristol Plainville Relay for Life, Friday, April 22nd at 10:00 PM. I have a reminder for the all-day budget vote, Tuesday, April 26th, 6:00 AM to 8:00 PM at the Firehouse. I have the Plainville Planning and Zoning Commission and the SLR International Corp. will be hosting a housing affordability workshop on Tuesday, April 26th at 7:30 PM at the Plainville Municipal Center, Room 304. If you'd like to expand your knowledge and understanding on housing affordability, review relevant demographics and housable data, or discuss local strategies for the creation of affordable housing options. For more information, you can contact Mark DeVoe at 860-793-0221, extension 7177. I also have one more item. Plainville Paws will be hosting a rabies clinic on Saturday, May 21st, from 12 to 3 at 29 Granger Lane for dogs and cats. The price is $10. Need additional information, it will be on our website, plainvillect.com, on social media as well. For additional information, you can contact the non-emergency number at the Police Department, 747-1616. Ask for dispatcher Maia or Donna in Animal Control. And that's it.
Okay, thank you. Thank you both for your report. Does anybody have any questions for either Cindy or Robert tonight with their reports? Okay, all right. We're all set then. I'm moving on to public comment. During this portion of our meeting, we welcome anybody from the public to step forward to that microphone. Please state your name and address. You'll be given three minutes to speak to the council. Okay, name and address, please.
22 West Main Street. I live in an apartment. My problem with, sometimes I got problem with tenants. So much people going on in there, and the people coming in there, they're not supposed to be in there, and I got problem with there. So, you know what it is? There should be, you know, let me tell you, mayor right here, I like to talk to you right now. There should be lock in front, and should be lock in back, and the only tenants, the only person that we could get in there should be lock, you should have security, because that apartment is, people come in, going out, anybody could go in there and do some stupid things, which we all like. And I speak my mind right now. You know, hey, you the mayor right here, you the mayor. Yeah, you are. You're the town manager because you're the mayor. Now, there's a lock on it, there should be lock, and the only thing that should be in there for the tenants.
Well, we'll talk afterwards.
We'll, we'll talk about it. And the back door, they should make it better so nobody can get in here, break the door, because somebody break a glass right there, they could get in, it's no problem. There should be regular door. I mean, if they want to break it, it should be like door, like, nobody can get in the bank. That's the, that's the door we need, in the back door over there and in the front. Now, it should be locked in there, there's a lock in there, so we should talk.
Okay.
Okay.
Hey, I'm a spokesperson right here. I've been here seven years, so I can speak my mind.
Hey.
Thank you very much.
Well, the mayor will take care of it. Don't worry.
Yeah, I know, he's good at it.
Mayor will take care of it. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
And the meeting is over?
What's that?
Has that meeting is over?
Not yet. We got a few more things to do.
All right. Can I step outside? Maybe it'd be good. I'll wait for the mayor.
Yep, we're going to be done in a little while.
All right.
Few more minutes.
I'm a spokesperson, so I'm a troublemaker.
All right.
All right.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak that has not had a chance?
No. He hasn't spoken, but I talked to him.
Okay.
I gotta talk to him later.
Don't worry, they'll step up.
Let's give him a turn. Okay, Joanne, would you like to have a turn?
Yeah.
Step right up.
Well, I haven't been here for a while, but you know who I am.
Let's hear it.
Joanne Edman, 166 West Main Street. And I'll tell you, I'm tired and I'm aggravated, but I'm, I'm going to say it. I'm not in favor of the budget. I am shocked that already again, we're going to have over $2 million. I mean, to quote Imus, remember, dear Imus, are you nuts? How can you heap that on the poor taxpayer here in town at this economic dilemma disaster that we are all dealing with? The poor taxpayer has been hacked and stabbed in every direction. It, it, there's, here's another quote. There's blood on the saddle, there's blood on the ground, and there's great big puddles of blood all around. Now, that may say, sound awful, but, but look, look how we're being bombarded and inflicted in Washington. All those horrible, that rogue regime that's inflicted on, upon us, inflation and, and the border crisis. Yes, the border crisis, Chris. You went nuts on me once when I said the border crisis.
I've never gone nuts on you.
Look at it now. Look at it now.
We've talked about it, but I have never gone nuts on you.
Yeah, okay. So I, I hope, I hope, please, please, do we have to have over $2 million? I mean, there's another thing too, revow. How can the taxpayer here in Plainville afford all this? How about the kids with houses, with kids, with, with kids, kids with kids? It's, it's, don't we have some other, I mean, can't we freeze a few things? I mean, I haven't been to any of the meetings. I just, just coming to, so to speak. You know, I haven't been around for a while, but I, I, I feel, I really feel for the taxpayer. And I know it's hard for everybody, everybody that's working. You all want a little raise. Well, I worked for corporate America, and I didn't get a raise all the time. Sometimes we had to freeze. Sometimes it was very, very little. And you have to go by what it is. And it's not too nice out there. As a matter of fact, it's the most horrible period of time that I've ever been through. Or, 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 I don't know, I'm at a loss. I'm tired, I'm at a loss for words, but not too many.
Okay. We know that.
Yeah.
Okay, Joanne, thank you.
Best thing I can do is not swear. I don't swear.
I do appreciate that.
It comes, it could roll out very easily, but I, I'm not going to swear.
I, I, I am thankful for that.
And there's so many wonderful words to be said.
Does anybody else wish to speak to the council that has not done so?
And I don't want to be arrested.
I don't want to arrest you.
Does anybody else wish to speak? Mr. Frangos.
Now, you come up with a few quotes.
Now, he's sharp as you are, my dear.
I like the one about blood on the saddle.
Oh, that's like an old comics movie. Lou Frangos, 10 Fairbank Street. I have some quick ones. One's a general question. I saw the work, the roadwork being done in Plainville. And what's caught my eyes, I see a lot of police cruisers from Plain, was it Plymouth, New Britain. Why are they here? If I may ask, that's not a challenge, why am I asking?
Well, you know, when there is construction and utility work and roadwork, and I'm going to make this statement, and I will defer to the experts here, of course, that requires a police officer to be there. And oftentimes, Plainville Police Officers, we don't have enough of them to go around to do, to, to step into those roles. So as a result, the Police Department will reach out to other towns, and those officers come in and they, they get paid through the construction, you know, we get paid from the contractors, and then the police officers get paid through that. So we do have to cover that. Is, am I, am I doing okay so far?
Yeah, yeah, they're offered, they're offered to the Plainville Police Officers first.
The construction pay, the town of Plainville doesn't pay?
No.
That was a curiosity I had, no more, no less.
Yep.
Okay. Number two is, this one's a little, to me, is a little significant. Ree, and I, and this isn't a challenger demeaning, but I, I look at the budget, and the Board of Education budget is double the town's.
Yep.
Okay, if that's what it's going to be, that's what it's going to be. But with respect, and I'm trying to do this with respect, if we have a BOE liaison, I'd like to have some presentations at Town Council meetings regarding updates from a Town Council's standpoint regarding what is transpiring at a Board of Education meeting, if that is, if that can be, if that could happen. I just, I think it'd be beneficial for people watching this Town Council meeting that don't come here, and they get a general idea of what is front, because I'll bet you, by and large, people don't know what goes on when it comes to the connection between the Town Council and the BOE.
Right. I can give a little bit of information about that. We do have a section on our council agenda for the, the third Monday meeting of each month.
Yes, ma'am.
And we do allow time for that, and the, the board folks do have other commitments, and oftentimes, they have, they're, you know, they're spread thin, and we don't necessarily have a visitor here. I do make every effort, I'm the liaison to the board, so I make every effort to come to their meeting to do that. Or if I can't go, I will provide them an email with information to update them at their meeting. And tonight, I gave an update from some of the board, things that are going to be going on, because I knew the, that the board chair was not available. So we do try to do that, I, you know, as best we can.
Well, you pretty much hit on something that I was hoping you would say, is maybe we should have a representative from the BOE here. We fund them.
Well, they're always invited to be here, you know. There's, there's been a standing item on our agenda for years where the board representative can come and speak to us. I, you know, they, it's not mandatory that they come, but they do have an opportunity to come, so.
That's what I'm kind of leaning to.
When they have, when they have time, they will come.
They have time. But that's just a personal opinion, I'm sorry about that. Just a personal opinion.
Okay.
Okay. Number three is, if I could have a couple minutes, an update on the two new town manager? How are we progressing?
I'm sorry, say, say it again, though.
How are we progressing on?
Oh, we're, we're still working on that project. We're moving along and interviewing, and we're not there yet.
And if I could ask Mr. Lee, please, I missed the sitting in the back, there's going to be the, the new trial discussion, the Heritage Trial Discussion Phase 1. When was the date on that, please?
It was last year, I'd have to look it up and get it to you.
I'm sorry?
It was last year, they're not having another.
Oh, there's not another Phase 1?
No.
Okay, I, okay.
No, it's the same one that, that we had the public information session last year.
Yes, sir.
So, so there's not going to be another public information session on Phase 1.
Well, the only, the reason I brought that up, Mr. Lee, was one of the maps, and I still have one, the one that, all the markings of the trail, directions they're going, et cetera, et cetera. The one that bothers me the most is Broad Street.
That's Phase 3.
Okay.
We're on Phase 1.
Okay, gotcha. But that's the one that, it all, because I don't know how they're going to inject, I don't want to get into it here, this isn't a place for it.
Well, they're, I mean, they haven't started designing it yet. It's only, it's only, it's only a, you know.
A proposal.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
It could certainly change between now and when the design-
It could certainly change between now and when the design is final.
Okay. Number, that's four, five. How are we progressing on some something for Betty Bokus?
We actually are going to be having a dedication of the library, a room in the library for Mrs. Bokus Rosemary. Would you like to?
Yes. Yes, it's going to be the youth services area downstairs of the library is going to be named in honor of Betty Bokus, and the dedication ceremony will be Friday, May twentieth at five-thirty. The public is invited.
It will be in the paper, I'm assuming?
Yes. Yeah.
That's all I ever needed to know. Thank you.
Yeah, and we'll probably mention it again at a council meeting, Lou, as well. It should be a very nice event. Yeah.
Okay. And the last thing, I just had to bring a little humor into this after all, when Mr. Lee was giving the financial dashboard, and I got a little confused when I saw the police department, and they were running behind on overtime, so bear with me.
For now. Okay, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Of course. Does anybody else wish to speak that hasn't done so? Anybody else?
Say one more thing.
Joanne, a quick one.
A quick one.
Make it quick.
Okay, all right. Quick, quick.
No cursing.
Another thing I'm worried about, you know, I think the board of ed, or the school system gets too much money. I've always have felt that. But what worries me is the CRT agenda curriculum that they're talking about out there. I have heard, I could be all wrong, but I have heard so far that we don't have it here in Plainville, but that it's coming this fall. And the CRT and this gender business, the kids don't need that. They just don't need that. They need to know their reading and writing and arithmetic, just like the old days. They really, and science, they don't need CRT.
Okay.
I'm worried to death about it.
We need to, you need to share that with the board of education superintendent.
Yeah, I know. But this, it ain't worth two red cents of the taxpayers' money to have to pay for that.
Okay.
That ties in with the budget.
All right.
Thank you for the extra time. I appreciate it.
Okay. Okay. If there are no others that wish to speak to the council tonight, I will close the public comments section and move on to our new business section. We have a few things to take care of. So, item number one, please.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Motion to approve the following proposals for the 2022 Neighborhood Assistance Act. A, Crysilla Center Incorporated, St. Phillips House Energy Conservation Project, seventy-two thousand, six hundred dollars. B, the Congregational Church of Plainville, United Church of Christ Energy Efficiency Initiative, one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. C, the Prudence Crandall Center Incorporated Annual Appeal, one hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and the Prudence Crandall Center Incorporated Energy Efficiency, fifty-eight thousand, seven hundred and five dollars.
Second. I have a motion in a second. Any discussion on those items? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number two, please.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Motion to authorize the use of coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds association with the American Rescue Plan Act to replenish lost revenue due to the COVID-19 epidemic for the following departments. A, library estimated cost of a hundred thousand dollars, and B, Recreation Department estimated cost forty thousand dollars.
Second. I have a motion in a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number three, please.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Motion for the town council acting as the water pollution control authority to establish a public hearing in the municipal center on Tuesday, May seventeenth, 2022, at seven p.m. to hear public comment regarding the installation of public sewers in Honor Heights.
Second. I have a motion in a second. Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item number four, please.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Motion to establish a public hearing in the municipal center on Monday, May second, 2022, at seven p.m. to hear public comment on an additional appropriation to the capital improvement plan.
Second. I have a motion in a second. Any discussion on that motion?
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number five.
Madam Chair, only four more to go.
Yep, we're getting there.
Motion to establish a public hearing in the municipal center on Monday, May second, 2022, at seven p.m. to hear public comment on the use of coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds associated with the American Rescue Plan Act for the replacement of Tofflon Elementary School chiller estimated at three hundred thousand dollars.
Second. Okay, I have a motion in a second. Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number six.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Motion to adopt a resolution entitled Fair Housing Resolution.
Mm-hmm. Second. A motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries. Number seven.
Motion to reappoint the town manager as the fair housing officer and authorize him to sign and implement the fair housing statement.
Second. I have a motion in a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes. Number eight, please.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Motion to authorize the town manager to sign and implement the Title VI Equal Opportunity Statement.
Second. Okay, I have a motion in a second. All those, any opposed? All those in favor?
Aye.
That backwards. Thank you very much. Sorry.
Make sure.